Good evening. Notice of a public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of Said City, will convene an executive session and a regular meeting on Tuesday, February the 5th, 2019, at 5:20 PM and at 6:00 PM in the Commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. We will begin with our executive session. Executive Session A: Consultation with Attorney pursuant to Section 551.0712 of the Texas Government Code on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Executive Session B: Consultation with Attorney pursuant to Section 551.0712 of the Texas Government Code on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Executive Session C: Consultation with Attorney pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.0712 regarding a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter.
May I move we go into executive session?
And one more.
Sorry.
Executive Session D: Consultation with Attorney pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.0712 regarding a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter.
Once again, I move you into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So I made the note here to make sure that I guide the discussion.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored by Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one nation indivisible.
Pastor Brad.
Father God, we thank you for the many blessings we have in our nation. And tonight, we lift up our national government, and we ask you to bring them together in unity around the ideas that are important to you. Lord, we ask you to help both sides actually forgive each other and listen to each other for the best for this nation. And Father God, for the City of Brownsville tonight, we lift up our mayor, our commissioners, and every presenter to do what's best for the City of Brownsville. Lord, we ask you to bring us together in unity, but yet also having transparency, in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Next, we have action on items discussed in executive session. Action Executive A: Consideration action to award a term contract for commercial and industrial solid waste collective services for the City of Brownsville.
May I move that I instruct, I'm sorry, management to continue as advised in executive session?
Okay, we're following the recommendation of the management. Is that correct?
Correct.
That would be the vote, Mayor, yes.
Okay. Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Please note, City Secretary, that I am abstaining from this vote, and I was not present in executive session.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So do we have sufficient votes to approve?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries.
Next, we have action item on Executive B. No action is required, so we'll move on to Executive Item C. This one was also consideration, possible action and discuss in executive session. Also, there is no action to be taken. And for Action Executive D, there is no action for that agenda item either. Next, we have the Mayor's Activity Update.
I have no report for today.
Next, we have the Commissioners' Activity Update.
I'll give my report in another meeting in February.
Good.
I had a quick report. I just want to let my constituents know that the City of Brownsville has dispatched a pothole paver after the last rains that we've had. We had a lot of streets washing out. So I noticed today that the patcher has been very visible and busy within District 2, all over the city, but today was District 2's turn. So I recommend anybody that if you have a pothole near your home, I know there was a very bad one on Price Road in front of Hannah, please call 546 HELP and don't, you know, don't put up with it. Call us and let us know, and we will be out there immediately to patch it. There has been a lot going on in District 2 lately. We are also, you know, cleaning canals and getting ready for the spring rains. So I just recommend to anybody, if you have any kind of litter or anything near your home, please clear the drains and call us at 546 HELP, and we will help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Anybody on this side? Okay, thank you very much. City Managers?
City Managers' Update.
Mayor, members of the Commission, I do have a few updates. The first update is last Friday, we did announce the appointment of our new deputy city manager who will be sitting there come next month. March 4th will be the start of Helen Ramírez. She comes to us from the City of Hutto, which is in the Austin-Round Rock area, currently serving as an Assistant City Manager. Her background is extensively in the area of planning and development, growth, and land use management, and that whole area, which will be a major focus for us going forward. She also will be joining us this Saturday, which is the next item. We are working on a TERS workshop, that's a tax increment reinvestment zone workshop, that will involve our consultant that we brought onboard late last year, which is TXP out of Austin, will be presenting to the Commission extensively from a high level to some project-specific summits that we've received, how those operate, and giving you all some direction from staff in terms of what we recommend the next steps be in consideration of the projects that we have before us. And the final one is, this Friday, we have Boys and Girls Scouts Scout Government Day, which is basically a takeover of City Hall by the Scouts, and they spend the entire day. I've not been here for this, but what I understand through the itinerary is that they're going to come in here and have a mock council meeting, appoint me, appoint a city manager, appoint staff, and basically run city for a day.
It's a wonderful, it's a wonderful day for most of us who have been through it at one time or another. What date was that again, though?
That'll be this Friday, all day.
Okay.
So some of you all have committed to being here in the morning. There will be a ceremony, some of you all will speak, I will say a few words, but it should be a fun day, so please join us.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Somebody's going to have to fill in for me, because I think I'll be out of town, okay? Thanks, Rick. Okay, proclamation?
Next, we have a proclamation for Historic Aviation Month.
Oh, that's me. So as most of you know, our airport terminal is being reconstructed, and that is only because of the work of our hard-working airport staff, and our mayor, and our commission, who have put in so much time and dedication to it, and we're really excited. This month is Aviation Month, but along with the new terminal comes all of the stories of the history and things that have happened at our airport. For example, Amelia Earhart, who cut the ribbon, right, in the 20s? So this next proclamation is very important to remember where our airport came from, even though we're transitioning into the future. So I'll go ahead and begin reading.
Yeah, why don't you all face the, you're going to read it, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to read it? No?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. "A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas declaring the month of February 2019 as Historic Brownsville Aviation Month. Whereas, on March 9th, 1929, the Brownsville International Airport was formally dedicated, a celebration noted by many as an outstanding achievement, in an international event of great significance. An estimated 20,000 individuals gathered to commemorate the airport's opening and the very first load of air mail from Mexico City to Brownsville. It was on this historic day that Charles Lindbergh arrived at Brownsville after a flight of 5 hours and 38 minutes. Carrying 500 pounds of mail, he was greeted by American aviation pioneer Amelia Earhart and fellow aviators Captain Ira Aker, Captain Frank Hawkes, and Colonel W.T. Johnson. Whereas, 87 years later, on October 28th, 2016, over 100 guests, including city and state officials, community leaders, and local residents joined the City of Brownsville and the Brownsville-South Padre Island International Airport for the new airport terminal groundbreaking ceremony. The groundbreaking ceremony inaugurated construction of the new airport terminal stated for completion in 2020. Whereas, March 9th, 2019, marks the 90th anniversary of the formal deadification of the Brownsville-South Padre Island International Airport, where the City of Brownsville continuing to make history with the construction of new passenger terminal to better serve the travel needs of Brownsville's residents and visitors alike. Whereas, the Brownsville-South Padre Island International Airport has demonstrated robust growth in both domestic and international sectors, with the total number of passengers arriving and departing growing by 30% over the past 15 years, and forecasted to grow another 30% over the next 15 years, and 80% by 2032. Whereas, aviation plays a critical role in Brownsville's economy, citizens, business, industries, and government agencies depend on aviation, often as a primary mode of transportation for travel, medical services, shipment of goods, and tourism. Whereas, with over a century of unique history dating back to 1913, Brownsville Aviation has, in the past, as and in the present, and will in the future, play a vital role of serving the transportation needs of the Brownsville and United States and the world. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in the Charter of Said City and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby declare the month of February 2019 as Historic Brownsville Aviation Month, and further encourage the citizens of Brownsville to celebrate the aviation as a unique resource in our community, and will always remember to fly Brownsville, done on this fifth day of February 2019."
I want to say a few words. Brian, good job, keep up the good job.
Thank you for everything that you do. Congratulations. Thank you for everything you do.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate this, and on behalf of the employees of the airport, the Brownsville-South Padre International Airport, we really appreciate being recognized for the impact that what we do every day has on the city. So thank you again very much for the recognition, and we'll take very good care of this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
Next, we have consent agenda items A through M. With the exception of letter C, we will remove that agenda item.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the public hearings. Public hearing number six, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-034, rezon from Dwelling A, DA to Dwelling G, DG, for Lot Number 18, Block 3, Riverside Park Edition located at 108 West Broadway Drive.
Good evening, honorable mayor and commissioners. This zoning case was denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission and is protested. To be overturned, it will require a three-force vote. This property is 0.1578 of an acre. It's currently zoned Dwelling A. They're asking to change it to Dwelling G. This will reduce the setbacks. This property has an existing rear structure, which is encroaching in the rear setback. This rezoning from Area District A to Area District G will reduce the setbacks and allow this existing structure to come into compliance. So here is the aerial. As you can see, this is part of a single-family subdivision. There are single-family dwellings in all directions. Here is the zoning map. This is part, I'm sorry, the tan is all dwelling, with the majority of it being Dwelling A. Here is the 200-foot mailout. This was, there was a written protest submitted. It was included 14 signatures, and is 49.11% of the 200-foot radius surrounding the property. The request is consistent with the Conference of Plan and the Future Land Use Plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did not support this rezoning from Dwelling A to Dwelling G. They were unanimous.
And city manager, was there a safety issue on this one?
So generally speaking, the setback requirements are there for life-safety purposes. So you don't want to have homes that are too close to each other, and I'm sure you all can give a much more technical planning explanation, but that's generally why you want to honor what's within the setback requirements.
This rear structure is also encroaching on the side setback. However, they did receive a variance from the board adjustment for that.
This is public hearing. Someone here on this issue?
Please state your name.
My name is Dennis Sanchez. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Good evening. I'd like to be able to pass out to you all some documents which might help explain the history of what happened.
That's right, Jim. Messed up. I'm going to open it anyway.
I just told Rick, this time we recognize him. Thank you.
But basically, what happened is, in about several years ago, my clients bought this house from Ms. Valenti. This is Mrs. Valenti's son, who's here to testify about what the prior use of the property was. The property consisted of a house and a rental house in the back. Been there for over 40 years. And on September the 22nd, 2017, if you would look at Exhibit 1, my clients asked for a building permit to repair the roof and install some siding, which is exactly what they did. They did not lay any new foundation. They simply repaired what was already in place. On June 25th, they asked for another application, another building permit, and that permit was for the purpose of, not reconstructing, but repairing, remodeling, the principal house in front. We're here today only on the issue of the back house. The back house, after they performed the repairs on June 25th, 2018, they were contacted by the city and told, hey, you're in violation. So what did they do? They went and asked for a variance, a side yard variance, and that is an exhibit in front of you all, too. I believe that's Exhibit 3. So they abandoned a side yard variance. They had already done the improvements in September, September about a year earlier. And what happened then was, the neighbor who was on the side yard complained. City came back and said, well, you're also in violations of the backyard setback. Backyard setback under the appropriate, under zoning A is 15 feet, under zoning G is 3.5 feet. I believe that I've provided you with a copy of Exhibit 5, which would show the main house there, and you can see the rent house in the back. Exhibit 6 is a document, excuse me, Exhibit 7 shows the back, which shows that my client had installed air conditioning units. And Exhibits 8, 9, 10 reflect what the neighbors do. And the neighbors, actually back onto the alley itself, there's no setback for the neighbors.
Without a permit?
I don't know why some of those neighbors are complaining, but it's sort of like, you know, I can't speculate why they're complaining, because they're already in violation. So the issue here is, we've already made the improvements in September of 2017. We attempted, and we did obtain a side yard setback variance in early this year of 2018, and now we're being told, well, because your back setback, backyard setback is not sufficient, you're going to have to tear down your house. Now, that is a hardship. And certainly, any step of the way, we have two building permits, one issued in September of 2017, another in June 2018. When we did the first improvements, which were on the back house in September of 2017, nobody said anything. Nobody complained from the city. It was life as usual. It was only much later that somebody comes in and objects, and this thing was reinitiated with a, they're saying, well, we are in violation of the zoning ordinance, because we violated the back set yard, backyard setback. So we're here today to ask this commission to reconsider why the Planning and Zoning Board turned it down. I might add that my client does not speak English. When she went to the P&amp;Z meeting, she forgot and did not tell them that she had already had a side yard setback variance, which had been granted. So perhaps that may have influenced why the board turned her down, but we're here to request that the board give her the relief which she seeks, which is simply to let her keep their house in place. I think Mr. Valenti can also add some credibility to the issue of the fact that this house, this back house, has always been rented. It's not a new deal. We're not trying to turn it into apartments. It's simply life as usual. Would you want to say something?
Good evening, honorable members of the Commission. Excuse me, I'm not from Brownsville. My mother purchased this residence, this property, over 30 years ago, and upon her dying wish, about a year and a half ago, she asked me to sell this property to Ms. Jimenez and Mr. Jimenez, because she considered him like her children. I have no problem with that. I'm here today because I've heard there's allegations that the house was never rented before. I repeat that, simply because my mother's always had somebody renting in the back, because she was on limited income, fixed income. She's a retired teacher's aide, and so from every place we can get, including myself, is how she was able to survive. So that's what I wish to bring forward to you, and I hope, and actually wish for justice, and where this woman, this family, does not have to tear down a structure that's been there way before my mother even purchased it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's still a public hearing. Anyone else here on this issue? I think some ladies back in the back.
I'd also like to clarify that what they're requesting is to reduce the setbacks. So the home is already within the setbacks, which are 5 and 1/2 feet on the side, and 25 from the center line of the alley. What this rezoning is going to do is going to reduce the setbacks for the side to 3 and 1/2, and for the rear, 13 and 1/2.
I just wonder why we're even bringing an issue before the commission on something that was built 40 years ago. Why are we changing the zoning on something that's already there? I mean, if we do not allow them to keep their building, really, the city needs to pay for their building before it gets torn down. It just doesn't make sense to me. I think our zoning laws are overly restrictive, and I don't have anything to be gained or lost in this issue. It's just me as a citizen watching and saying, if that were my property, how dare anyone talk about tearing it down many years after it was built and paid for? They bought what they expected to be what it was, and to have it torn down just doesn't make any sense. And we keep coming forward with issues like this on properties that always complied before, but now with the new zoning regulations, now we have to come back here and relitigate the whole thing, and that just doesn't make sense to me, so.
Thank you, Pastor.
Please state your name.
My name is Nasriza Yala. I'm here. I live next to him, and I've been living there for 25 years, and I knew the previous owner from there, and I got pictures. I just don't want him closer to my property. I mean, fire hazard, that's my concern. And I got pictures when it was, in 2004, how the apartment in the back was. And from that house to my property line, it's only 2 feet, and he wants a 3.5 feet from it. And behind that house, when he fixed it, he got, he put more cement, so he already got his 13 feet from the rear. So what else does he want? It's, that residence for older people, we want it quiet, you know? We just, and I have pictures here you're willing to see.
Are you saying that the buildings, that we're talking about, the apartment in the back?
Yes.
Is that the way it was 30 years ago, and he added to it?
He added a roof, and inside, at one time, it was a one-bedroom, Joe used to live there, and I know, you know? But the building is the same. I just don't want him to get closer to my property line.
That's not what he's asking. They're not asking to get closer to your property line.
They want to move the line to where the house is now, because it encroaches on the setback. They just want to move the setback to where the house is now.
They're not going to make it bigger.
So they're not making it bigger?
If you could just see the pictures and... That's, this is in 2004. If you see the pictures now, it has more... Now, in the main house, there was a window. Now there's a door.
Did it increase the size of the building?
Yes, on this one, yes. On this one, and you can see there's an addition in there.
That whole thing to the left?
Yeah, all this. See, this house and my house are very different.
Okay, but was this done under the permit that was granted? He was allowed to do that? Are you seeing, Kevin, that can see what she's showing? Show her the added part.
This is the, this is this.
And that was what was allowed to be under this permit that they were talking about?
So there was extensive work that was done with the house permit, and because of this work that was done, it lost its legal nonconforming status. So prior to this work being done, the structure could exist as it was encroaching on the setbacks. But because they did this work, now it needs to come into compliance. So they're not looking to expand the structure that's there, only comply with the existing zoning rules.
But they did expand it, which put them out of compliance.
They did, right here.
Francesca.
The, oh, yes, I'm sorry. They did receive a permit to have an addition onto their main home. They did receive a permit for that. They did not receive a permit to expand on the accessory unit, the rear structure.
And I have talked to her. I have talked to her, and I told her they were going to divide the house in two, which they did. They put a wall, and then they got fine, and he had to tear down the wall. You know, so, I mean, if he knows he's lost, I mean, I feel like he's making a, laughing at the city, because he's getting away with it, knowing that he has to have permit for everything, but yet he did it under the table. Now that's why we're here.
So Mayor and Commissioners, what you have is a property that was legally...
So Mayor and Commissioners, what you have is a property that was legally non-conforming as per our zoning ordinance. Certain triggers could occur that could allow you the opportunity to bring that home back into compliance. This is an opportunity to allow them to no longer encroach on the setbacks. That's what's before you today.
City Manager?
Yeah, I may just say one thing in rebuttal. They're talking about the second permit. The first permit was issued in 2000, was, was issued earlier in September of 2017 for the work on the back home. If you read the permit, it says roof and siding, which was attached to the house. That's all that was done. And on November 8th of 2018, this past year, the side yard variance, which is what she's complaining about, was granted by P&amp;Z. So she didn't like that, so now she's back on, okay, you're not in violation of side yard now, now you're in violation of the backyard setback, which doesn't front on her property.
City Manager? Go ahead.
Like you said, I don't care what they do, you know, but I don't want them close to my property. That's, you know...
They're not gonna get close to your property.
And I don't want, they're doing things that I don't feel comfortable.
Can I tell you something? They're doing, what they're doing when they came to pull the permit is actually what's hurting them. And there's a lot of people, and you know it because it happens in my neighborhood, and from the pictures that I saw, it looks oh too familiar. You know, people do stuff on the weekend. We just got an email today about somebody who, dear Lord, you don't even want to see the picture.
It was horrible, horrible.
Yeah. So, you know, that's the tendency in the city. We try to advise people not to do it, and people go do work around the house and additions and everything, and without pulling a permit. What I'm, I'm gonna address something to the city manager if you don't mind. This is gonna be a recurring thing. What's really ticking me off is that these residents, they pulled a permit, they've gone through the process, they have to be paying attorneys. No offense, Dennis, you know, you gotta make your money, but they, they hire attorneys, they pay our fees. You know, for, how many people do we have that don't come pull permits and build way out of their means? You know, you got folks that actually complied, you got folks that, but what is hurting me, what is affecting me, is that these are our residents, and when they have to come, they're, they're wanting to comply. These are old structures, and they need to bring them up to date. This is something that my mom left me. This is something, unfortunately, here it's not the case. This is something that they bought, but you come to the city, you pull a permit, and you want to bring it up to date. You know, you want to have it compliant. You don't want to have a shed. You don't want to have something that's falling apart. And our staff is the one that, I know they're doing their job. I'm not, I'm not against that. What I'm against is try to work with people, get that to your staff. Try to work with people. You know, I mean, when somebody has had this structure like this, you know, I, I feel for the teacher aide because I know, I know what the teacher, I know what a professional aids and how they have to look for, for extra income, you know, but, damn it, man, you know...
So just to clarify for the record, staff did support, it was P&amp;Z who did not support.
I'm sorry.
So, so staff did support. And, and, and there are situations, I can't speak for the past completely, but I will say that there are gonna be some things that we can clean up. Some things are situational. One example is, many times...
What we got in the email today, by all means, break that down.
Right. That's proactive.
Yeah, that's gonna, yeah, that has to come down.
But you have situations such as, for example, the city many times may annex an area that built, businesses were built, homes were built under almost no standards. They get annexed, and then the city standards get imposed, and when they trigger, so they're legally non-conforming, and then things can happen, they trigger certain requirements where they have to come into compliance. We should work with them because we annexed them and imposed a whole new standard. This is a different situation. You see, that one doesn't have staff involvement directly. This example does, so you want to be considerate of that, and staff has been considerate of that. So I just want to make that known. But you're right, there are, this is situational. There are situations where circumstance, you know, may involve the city, and sometimes it's a different action, but we need to evaluate all that when we make these decisions. Absolutely, yeah.
No, no, I, they asked, Mrs. Alvez, she was my grandmother. We, we know her. Even now, I have to go to the old police station because his address is 108, mine is 108, so half of my mail I don't get. So I don't know if he's getting it and throwing it away, I don't know. So I have to ask the renters every time a new one moves in, if there's letters there for me, to give it to me. You know, so that's, that's one of the issues. And then when he bought the house, the house was still under the lady's name, Mrs. Alvez, so...
Carlos, can you help her with that? Can you have the department look into that?
They already went, they already, I went to the city. They said they can't do it because I have an easement. So I don't know who had the fault having two addresses. For me to change my address, I have to pay all my paperwork.
Okay.
So, I just don't, you know, I just want it as it is, you know, don't add anything and, you know...
City Manager? I don't think, I don't think anybody's gonna add anymore.
We'll, we'll work with her on this issue.
Can we work with her on the address issue?
Absolutely.
Work, work on that one, Noel. Anyone else here on this issue? Okay, we got one more.
Good evening. My name is Yolanda Portius, and I've been living there on Broadway for 46 years already. So, the thing is that I understood that he has, he wants to have like three apartments there, and I think that that's not right because, you know, there's a, a lot of older people there, you know, and if he rents, we don't know who in the world he's gonna rent to. So that's, you know, that's an issue, you know, and then if there's a lot of cars parked and there's a fire hazardous or something, what's gonna happen, you know? I mean, I'm concerned about that.
Ms. Portius, what's before us today? Trust me, he's not gonna build any more apartments. Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not about that.
Okay.
Yeah, trust me.
Okay, that's, I was concerned because...
No, that's not a problem. Now, we, we...
You have every right to your concerns.
And if any time you see a renter that's violating, you can always call.
Yeah, because, you know, you never know who might rent, you know, maybe they, they think that it's a good person. I'm not saying, you know, they're gonna rent to people that are troublemakers or anything like that, but you never know.
It's hard, never knowing.
Who's in there, you know?
Whether they rent or live there, you never know what the neighbor's gonna do.
Yeah, so I'm concerned, and all of the neighborhood around there is older people, you know?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, thank you for...
That was my concern.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming, coming forward.
Thank you, everybody.
Anyone else? Okay.
I move to close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
I move to approve that variance.
Second.
Rezoning?
Would that be the correct language? I moved to rezone from dwelling...
Dwelling G to dwelling A.
From dwelling G to dwelling A.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm voting aye.
Okay. Does that, does that meet the requirements?
Yeah. Actually, we have, we have the requirement.
You had one, two, three, four, four approval and one against. Is that, does that meet the requirements?
I think we had one, I think it was five approval, actually.
Okay, I approve. I just didn't know I had to vote, that's what I'm trying to tell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have public hearing number seven. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 219 dash 1652 to amend the code of ordinances, chapter 348 zoning, article 9 historic preservation, urban design section 348, 1500, by re-adopting the historic preservation plan and dealing with related matters.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of the Commission. What we have for you tonight is the 2019 preservation plan. As a brief recap, the, on the adoption process, ordinance number 2015 dash 1606 requires a preservation plan to be approved on an annual basis. The process is the, the Historic Preservation Designer Review Board offers first approval, followed by the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval, city commission's approval, the participating taxing entities' approval, which include the BISD, the Brownsville Navigation District, Cameron County, and the Texas Appraism College, prior to being sent to the Cameron County Appraism District for implementation. Prior year's preservation plans normally are approved by the sequence of taxing entities that we saw on the prior slide, and it includes various numbers of properties. The ones depicted in that bracket are from 2016 to 2018, and includes a list, a mix of the list that is followed below. Provided flexibility for maintenance compliance, the need for changes, the lack of historic property maintenance prompted the Historic Preservation Office to address properties listed in the 2018 preservation plan. Seventy-one out of 114 properties received a notice of non-compliance. We received, the office received 48 property owners' responses. The grounds for removal include serious lack of maintenance of exterior facade and/or yard, highly noticeable structural, structural issues on the roof, and fascia issues, foundation settlement, et cetera. The pictures depicted on the right serve as some examples of what we're, we're talking about tonight. Non-historical significance, loss of historical integrity, or unpermitted or illegal work done to the properties. Section 348 dash 1502 sets forward the reasons and process for deletion of the properties from the list due to lack of maintenance, and it specifies a compliance period not to exceed 60 days. The 2019 preservation plan has 83 properties that are recommended for approval. Within them, there are National Register of Historic Places, Recorded Texas Historical Landmarks, Local Designated Primary Resources, and substantial rehabilitations. Out of, out of the 116, 31 properties are being removed. The adoption schedule is the following, and it names the taxing entities, the meeting date, and in addition to the agenda due dates. So we're in a pretty tight schedule for this one. The staff recommendation is to adopt the 2019 Historic Preservation Plan as recommended by the Historic Preservation Designer Review Board and the Planning and Zoning Commission in order to meet the agenda deadlines established by the participating taxes entities, and also to meet the notice of value deadline that is set forth by the Appraism District. This will allow property owners to appeal any discrepancies to their tax statements in, in order to ensure correct values are certified by the Appraism District before the final tax statements go out to property owners. As an added measure, we are, we are recommending to ourselves or to our department to begin the 2020 plan adoption process earlier in order to accommodate or give the property owners additional time to comply, anywhere between 90 to 120 days. And we're here to answer any questions you may have.
This is a public, this is a public hearing. Anybody here on this issue? Close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you approve?
I'm not waiting a second. I'm not voting on this one according to my lawyer.
Noted.
For whatever reason, I don't know.
You and I both.
Okay, okay, that, that, it's, so, public hearing is closed. Now you have a motion that you approve? Is there a...
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I didn't abstain.
Abstain.
Thank you.
Next, we have the public comment period. No one signed up for the public comment period, so we'll go on to the next agenda item. We have items for individual consideration. At this time, we are going to remove agenda item number nine as per city staff, so we can move to adjournments.
Would you adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.